...to spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator-pages-how-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, then, for the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on channel one ninety-one, or dial into the meeting at seven seven four three zero four one four five five. Enter one four two eight pound for the meeting number and one two three four five for the access code. This phone number is only active to the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. I've just called the meeting to order. The first item will be the approval of the minutes of August eleventh. Following that, we have an approval not required request in A and R for two fifty-one Podunk Road. At six thirty-five, we'll have a public hearing for a special permit request and site plan review for New England Cold Storage at Six Picker Road. Seven fifteen, we'll have a request for a waiver of site plan for sale energy. The property is located at fifty ninety Technology Park Road. Following that, we'll have the discussion of the codification project where the town is planning on putting all of its bylaws and regulations onto the town's website. And after that, we'll have the town planner update. Following that, we'll be old and new business. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of August eleventh? Any questions, Tom, Jane?
Charlie, page five.
Yeah.
In the middle of the page, I believe that should read C Blanchard instead of C Bouchard.
Ask about the timeline?
Yes.
Andy?
And also on page... Charlie?
Yeah, sure.
Also on page five, up at the second paragraph where it says Waters, I think we need to put in a question about the hookup with Sturbridge Waste Water Management rather than Southbridge, so that it's more clear.
Okay.
In the middle of the page where C Bouchard was just changed to Blanchard, as far as approval process in Southbridge, when they get the process started in Sturbridge, the approval process for what? It's not stated anywhere in the minutes?
Maybe that could be clarified.
Yeah, so it was for emergency access.
Probably the access.
Right, the road.
So the access road and then of course sewer would be something that will be determined later. So Sue, on your first comment on the second paragraph there, what was it again? Question was about the monthly fee for water and sewer. Was there something else on there?
It was about the hookup to the Sturbridge Waste Water Management Plant versus Southbridge. There's no reason it shouldn't come to Sturbridge. That's why we enlarged the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, not exactly, though. I mean, there's a lot of other issues with that because there was a plan originally to have that section of town go to Southbridge. I think a lot of it will have to do with the current arrangements and also the actual cost. So I think that's maybe going to be something that's going to be more, you know, determined through Department of Public Works than the planning board.
I don't know. I just wanted to verbalize it before any contracts were signed with Southbridge because the purpose of enlarging our wastewater...
Well, I mean, I think that's a...
...to increase that use.
I mean, originally...
Pardon?
Originally, when the sewer was planned, there certainly was the plan on the pot of Sturbridge to have some of our sewage go to Southbridge. Now, that may have changed.
Right.
But, I mean, certainly the overall expansion of the plant wasn't just to have all the sewer here. I think it'll have to be determined whether it's cost-effective both for the proponent and for the town as to whether that sewage goes to Southbridge or Sturbridge. So I don't think it's in the planning board, you know, requirement to really do that. We can discuss, we can put in there we wanted to discuss it, but it certainly isn't going to be our choice.
We need to be attended to verbalize this need.
I don't, so I honestly don't believe there's a need for that sewage to come to Sturbridge if it's not cost-effective to do that.
I disagree because of the expense of the wastewater plant. Uh-uh. I disagree, Charlie.
That's fine, but I mean, neither one of us, neither one of us have the decision to say what the planning board wants. All that discussion really was, was a discussion about where the sewer is going, one way or the other. So if you want to clarify for that, that's fine, but we're certainly not...
About what?
...to go to South. We're simply directing them to go to Sturbridge or Southbridge.
No, Southbridge does... All we need is a pump station, and that was discussed in that incident in the minutes. And the pump station cost was talked about.
Charlie, I do recall that conversation, and I can add that.
Was prior to our enlargement.
Okay.
I do recall that conversation. I'll make the amendment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other changes or comments, directions? If not, I'll have a motion to accept minutes amended.
Almost.
Almost. Russell and Sue, first or second?
Yes.
Okay. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an approval not required request for two fifty-one Podunk Road. Jane, do you want to go over that?
Um, yes, actually, Mr. Levesque is on the meeting as well. He was the surveyor who prepared this plan. But this plan is the Silverburgs Land has frontage on Podunk Road as well as on Putnam Road. However, a portion of Podunk Road is not passable here. So after conversation with Mr. Levesque, he went back to his client, and they changed the plan to reflect that there is adequate frontage on Putnam Road. So the plan is to create three new lots and then the existing lot that contains the home and the garage. And all of the parcels meet the requirements, and I believe this is a scenic road, so if they do any tree removal, or you can see there's some stone wall there, if they do removal greater than fifteen linear feet, whoever plans to develop a home there would need to come back to the planning board for a permit for that. So the plan as presented meets the requirements. We do have the application and the checklist, which should be in your packet. And unless the board has any questions for Mr. Levesque, I would recommend that you endorse the plan as submitted and ask Ms. Waters to come to the office tomorrow to sign the plan.
Very good. Sue, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Chris?
No questions.
Dane?
No.
Okay, Mike?
No questions.
Jeff?
Nothing.
Us?
Yes, I do, Charlie. Um, Jean, I know that Podunk Road is impassable, but was there any research done as to whether that road was abandoned from the, by the town? And the reason I'm asking that is lot, uh, lot C has adequate frontage on both roads, and if they wanted to put their driveway off of Podunk Road, can they come back to the town to have that road brought up to specifications?
So according to our research, that section of Podunk Road has not been discontinued by the town. However, it's not passable. I think the Board of Selectmen, acting as the street road commissioners, would have to make that determination as to whether they would allow that section of roadway to be improved so that it serves as sufficient frontage with reasonable access as required. So it would go back to the Board of Selectmen for that. Whether or not they'd approve it, I'm not sure, but it is potentially possible. However, they do have plenty of frontage on Putnam as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, Charlie. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a motion then to sign the A and R, to authorize Sue to sign the A and R?
Almost.
Almost. Okay. Second? Second? Chris? Great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Joe, we'll give you a call once Sue's been able to stop into the office and sign the plan, so you can pick up the Mylar.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good night.
Okay. Now, I just got a notice that Jeff Adams has left. Is that correct, or?
Jeff, are you still on the call? Okay, we seem to have lost Jeff.
Okay. Well, we can, I guess, proceed to open the public hearing. It's six forty-two, so Sue, do you want to read the announcement, the public hearing?
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty A, Section eleven, the planning board will hold a public meeting virtually on Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty-five, on the application of New England Cold Storage Limited, ninety-nine Willow Street, Yarmouth Court, Massachusetts, zero two six seven five. The applicant requests a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to Chapter ten, twenty-four, and twenty-five of the zoning bylaw regarding the erection of a cold storage facility. The applicant requests site plan approval to allow for the construction of a one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine square foot cold storage facility meant to operate in the food and, in the food and food supply chain and related site improvements. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to construct a building that is greeted in thirty-five feet high in accordance with Chapter ten, Section ten point zero eight eight, not going by law. The applicant is proposing a max building height over the freezer area of fifty-six feet, six and a half inches. The property location is Six Picker Road, Sturbridge, Mass. zero one five six six.
Okay. Charlie, before we start, can I just see Jeff Adams? Are you back on?
Yeah, I'm back on.
Okay, let me just find you and rename you.
Got me?
Yep. Just one second, I'll add your name. Okay. All right, Charlie. All set.
Okay, Jean, do you want to bring us up to date on what's been on with this?
Yes, I will. So for quite some time now, we've actually been working with New England Cold, Chris Bailey, Brady Panis and their team on the proposal to build a cold storage warehouse for frozen foods, or cold and frozen foods, in the industrial park. You'll recall at the annual town meeting, we actually had a TIF that was on the warrant for that purpose, and that has been approved. So we, when the application was submitted, we received quotes for peer reviews for the stormwater management system and the traffic impact assessment as well. So this project has had to go through Conservation Commission, and you'll hear during the presentation that Mr. Bailey will provide that they're actually going to have a temporary construction access through the Sturbridge metallurgical property. And it's a substantial wetland crossing that they have to do, which will take some time. So because we're coming up on the cold winter months, they wanted to be able to access the site and start construction. So we've sent the application out for staff review, and as I mentioned, peer reviews have taken place. The stormwater management system was reviewed by CMG Associates, and that system has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission at its last meeting. And the Conservation Commission will be issuing an order of conditions for this project. We've also sent the proposal out to all staff for comment and review. You'll notice in your packet, there were some concerns from the chief of police on traffic management. And in that regard, we worked with John Chevlin, and Jeff Bridges actually reached out to Mass DOT to discuss the concerns. We all recognize right now that the intersection of Picker Road and Route twenty is a level of service F, so we were a little concerned about adding this proposal to that park. However, after review and discussion with Mr. Chevlin and with Mass DOT, we've all come to the realization that they're actually adding very little traffic in the grand scheme of things. So we realize we have some issues with that intersection. We know Route twenty needs, drastically needs some improvements. As we go on in the coming months, Mr. Bridges and I will continue to work with Mass DOT to see if we can get some of those changes implemented. But at this time, we're not recommending that this applicant have to pay for any mitigation. Beyond that, and John Chevlin is on the call with us this evening, and he will be able to go over his findings and his review of their traffic study. The applicant is also requesting a special permit for an increase in the height, and you'll see that they will put up some renderings this evening to show where this project may be visible from. The increased height is needed to have an efficient operation. This is a very expensive project to build, and we had a lot of environmental constraints to work with. So for that reason, they're requesting the height special permit. I've reviewed everything, and I am recommending approval of the special permit and site plan with conditions. And with that, we will turn it over to Mr. Bailey. We will allow him to share his screen, and he can go through his project proposal with you. As I mentioned, he has, I believe, entire team on the meeting this evening, and we have John Chevlin with us. We do not have the stormwater peer reviewer since that is complete and approved, and we are not recommending any additional changes to that system at this time. So with that, I will allow Mr. Bailey to share his screen if that is okay with you, Charlie.
That's fine. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean. Hi, good evening, everybody. Yeah, so how does this work, Jean? Do you, you... Okay, so I can, um... Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, good evening. My name is Chris Bailey. I am principal of New England Cold Storage LLC. We are in the process of developing this facility, and we intend to be the operator of the facility. We will be a third-party logistics company, which means that we will have a customer base of different food companies that will pay to store and have us handle their materials that'll come in pallet and go out in pallet. So thank you for having us this evening and looking forward to showing us what, showing you what we're doing. We do have a number of our team members with us tonight, as Jean mentioned. So the first team member is Brady Panis. Brady is our project manager with Arco Design Build. Arco Design Build is an Atlanta-based company, and they are one of the top providers of these particular buildings. This is very specialty construction, frozen storage and cold storage buildings are pretty high technical facilities. And so Arco has been leading the way for us through the process of designing the site plan and ultimately the building to be as efficient as possible, and that's very important because these buildings not only use a lot of electricity, but are also very expensive to build.
Chris, if I could interrupt you for a minute? I don't know if this is today, but I think you get a lot of feedback. Is anyone else getting a lot of feedback?
Yeah, there is. Perhaps if everyone could mute themselves if they're not speaking while Chris is giving his presentation? Let me move my speaker, too. Maybe that's part of it. Want to try that again, Chris, and we'll see how it goes?
Hopefully, it's not me. Okay, so Arco Design Build is with us. Brady Panis is our project manager for this whole project, and he is on the line here and will help us with the presentation. Summit Engineering is with us. Andy Baum is on the screen there with us, and he has done all the site civil work. He also designed the stormwater management plant and worked with the peer reviewer to get that approved through the Conservation Commission. And Van Ass and Associates has been our traffic engineering firm, and Bernie Gwen is with us from Van Ass, as well as John Chevlin, a peer reviewer from Pear, is also with us about traffic. So that is the team. So Six Picker Road is what we're working on, so I'm going to just give a quick overview, if you'll indulge me, to talk just briefly about the business model here and why did we choose Sturbridge for this project. So as you can see, that location is nicely centered in New England. So when you're doing a facility like this, this is truck traffic in and out, so being on the trucking corridors is very important. This location happens to be just a couple miles from the intersection of Routes eighty-four and ninety. So we're nicely situated between New York City and Boston, between Boston and Albany, and very close to Route ninety-one going up north into New Hampshire and Vermont. So it's an excellent location for this facility. Moving in a little closer, this is the location here that you're probably all familiar with, and you can see from this, can, I'm sorry, can everybody see my arrow, my cursor?
Yes.
Or no? Oh, okay. Thank you. So going on Route twenty here, west, a couple of miles, you get to this turn here where you can go north or south on eighty-four, and obviously from there you can go east or west on ninety. So it's a very good truck access for us and doesn't involve going through the downtown area of Sturbridge. That's the lot. It's approximately eighteen and a half acres, and it is surrounded by other industrial uses and by highways, so it's nicely shielded from the rest of the Sturbridge community. And it is in the center of the industrial park zone in town. My first conversation with anyone in Sturbridge, I called Jean and said, hey, if I wanted to locate one of these in town, where would it be? And she pointed me to the industrial park, and that was how I found this lot. So here's our site plan. This is really a concept plan. We'll have a little more technical plans later, and I'm sure you've all seen them in your packet. But for the sake of understanding the concept of it, this visually is useful, I think. As you can see, we do have a significant wetland at the beginning of the site that we need to cross over as we come off of Picker Road. And then when we come into the site, there's a loop, a one-way loop around the site like this, and the office is back here in the corner. This is the indoor docking space. This light gray area is where the trucks back up to the dock doors. And these large rooms here are the hallrooms that are where all the storage is inside in the warehouse itself. So looking again at, from the east corner, kind of the back corner of the property as you come into it, and that is the office area, pretty small little office, less than four thousand feet. And then over here on the right, you can see the dock doors. And then inside dock space is this area here, and the warehouse is in the back. The neighborhood that we are in here is a perfect spot for us because we are surrounded by other industrial users. Along Picker Road, we obviously have Sturbridge Metallurgical, who has been a very friendly neighbor and granted us temporary access that we need. And then across the street from our driveway is approximately here, and across the street from us is the FW Web Plumbing Supply Warehouse, and then up the street a little bit is Vent Community Services. When you come into Picker Road, obviously, if you turn right on Technology Park, you pass several smaller businesses along here, and all the way to the back is where the Cube Smart Self Storage Facility is. And that's really our closest neighbor in terms of where the building will be. The building will be roughly in this area here where the, where the dock is. So standing out on Picker Road, approximately where our driveway will be, that's the view across Picker Road. That's the FW Web Facility. Then standing in that same spot, looking back south, you're looking at the Ventures Community Services facility. Over here is the new propane, the DeLeo Propane Facility that's going in here. That's currently under construction. And this is a view from Technology Park Road of the Cube Smart Facility, these small buildings in the front, is the existing Cube Smart Facilities. And that is the view of our warehouse behind that, over the property line, obviously, onto our property. That's kind of, if you're, don't, if you're not on our property, that'll probably be about the best view that you'll be able to get of our building, is looking over the Cube Smart Facility. From Route ninety, Mass Turnpike, you will be able to see our building, but of course the right-of-way is quite wide over the interstate, and so that, that will shield it a fair amount. There won't, there won't be a lot of visibility, but you will be able to see the building there, in the back. So as Jean mentioned, we did receive Conservation Commission approval last week for the project, and we're very excited to be moving on to the next step now, talking to you. And so just briefly, what we've accomplished with them was to cross over this wetland. The darkest green area is the wetland itself, and then the twenty-five, fifty, hundred, and two-hundred-foot buffers coming back from that. There's a natural narrowing of the wetland right in this area, and so that became an obvious place for us to put our driveway coming in. That would be the shortest crossing and the least impact to the wetland area. And this is a close-up of the crossing itself going over that area. That's the actual bridge crossing. And then down here is, and we'll see this in a couple different slides, this is the replication area to... So, as Jean mentioned, we did receive Conservation Commission approval last week for the project and we're very excited to be moving on to the next step now, talking to you. And so, just briefly, what we've accomplished with them was to cross over this wetland. The darkest green area is the wetland itself and then the 25, 50, 100 and 200-foot buffers coming back from that. There's a natural narrowing of the wetland right in this area and so that became an obvious place for us to put our driveway coming in. That would be the shortest crossing and the least impact to the wetland area. And this is a close-up of the crossing itself going over that area. That's the actual bridge crossing. And then, down here is, and we'll see this in a couple of different slides, this is the replication area to replicate, to replace the wetland that is disturbed here. This is the culvert. It's not the actual culvert, obviously, because it hasn't been manufactured yet, but this is an approximation of what it will look like from the company that will make it. Brady, do you want to talk for a minute about how this will be installed?
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So, this culvert gets prefabricated, not completely, but in sections and sheets. That thing come with instructions and from there, it's all shipped to the site, from which point it'll be erected on-site and then craned as one unit into place. There's gonna be footings running, the two ends of the rainbow, for lack of a better description, finish in, and those get tied in with concrete and rebar in a little keyway at that location, at which point we'll backfill in the aluminum head walls and replace any other damage that we've done to the wetland at that point. Guard rails and the daylighted utility pipes that you're seeing run across the top there, that wall then being installed separately after the crossing is in place. And from there, we can put stone base down and do all the paving to finish off the road.
So, standing at the entrance from Picker Road into our driveway, this is the rendering of what it will look like, going over that bridge and the warehouse up the hill a little So, with the temporary access, I superimposed it here just so you could get an idea of where it is. So, up here at the top of the screen is the metallurgical, Sturbridge Metallurgical Company. And so, their driveway comes in here. We will just pass the building and then cut back up the hill and into our property and create a temporary road up through here that we'll need for approximately eight weeks while the permanent crossing is created. And then, this whole area will be restored and renovated. So, this is the stormwater management plan and Andy Baum is on the phone. Andy, do you want to talk a little bit about how you went about this process?
Sure. Thank you, Chris. Andy Baum from Summit Engineering, as Chris indicated, we're the civil engineer for the project. The general topography of the site flows from a high point located to the page south of the property behind Cube Smart to the northwest towards that, or page northwest towards that wetland complex. This is the general topography of the site and the stormwater management system and the way we filled the site to gain access to the truck courtyard generally mimics that condition. As you can imagine, it's quite a large building and the trucking dock has its own specific requirements in terms of being level and flat, but the water is conveyed from the trucks area, the truck parking or truck dock area on the right of the page and it is routed, collected into catch basins and routed around the building towards two drainage basins. Drainage basin A is located to the south side of the, right where he's circling it. It's the larger of the two. It takes on the majority of the truck courtyard and the access perimeter driveways. And then, basin B is a smaller basin that takes care of the low-point water that is shed from that T-intersection towards the low-point, just to the right of the crossing area. The stormwater is treated or meets TSS removal, depending on the routing path, either through a deep-sump catch basin, sediment forebay and infiltration basin prior to ultimate discharge. It's the function of basin A. For basin B and also for the water that we're picking up at the intersection of Picker Road and the proposed driveway, we're utilizing deep-sump catch basins with hoodeds, as well as a proprietary carry device. Storm scepter is specified in the drainage calculations. And then, for basin B, that's also an infiltration basin. Or we also have, and we have just a storm scepter at the intersection because there is not any real estate to put in any further basins. You will notice there's a roof drain recharge system located just a page south of basin A. Yep. That is just taking direct recharge, direct roof runoff from the entire building and recharging it primarily where it cascades into basin A if there's any overflow. That is how we convey water through the site. We manage water through the site to meet the intent of the stormwater management bylaw and to control the water coming off our site so we don't negatively impact the wetland or the abutment at Sturbridge Metallurgical.
And then, the replication area down here, you want to talk about that for a second, please?
Sure. The intent of the replication area is to replace at a two-to-one ratio, a little more than a two-to-one ratio, for the wetland crossing at the culvert location that Chris talked about before. Based on input from the Conservation Commission, they determined that was the best location to replace it, so it'll be replaced in kind with dugout and replaced in kind with soils and native wetland species vegetation. It will be in the groundwater table, adjacent to the abutting wetland. And then, we furthermore have discharge from the stormwater to keep water in it to help habitate those species.
It's probably worth mentioning because the planning board just went through this with DeLeo Gas and their runoff comes down here. And how does this work under here? There's a, can you explain that, Andy?
Sure. If the board remember, there is a drainage easement that was part of the approval for DeLeo Gas onto this property for the purpose of conveying water. Upstream, right where that pointer is, is the drainage basin for DeLeo Gas that discharges onto the property. In order to keep water from either causing a nuisance condition or a damage condition, we're proposing a drop inlet catch basin, be able to get the water underneath the road and then convey it through a culvert and then, right on the other pointer, discharge into the adjacent wetland. So, that we're not impeding water coming from DeLeo Gas and that water isn't damaging the proposed driveway. Because it will be elevated, slightly elevated from our driveway at that location.
The other big issue in terms of the proposed contouring here is the retaining wall. We're putting this in so that we don't encroach on Sturbridge Metallurgical property and so that retaining wall will hold all that right there like that. It's not a huge wall, but it's a pretty significant installation.
Correct. It steps with the proposed grade.
Okay. Any, I guess I should stop and ask if there are any questions about that.
Does any member of the board have a question?
Sue, you're muted.
Sue, did you have a question or?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Chris?
Okay. Thank you.
Dane, all set?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but thank you.
All right. Mike?
Uh, no questions, no.
Jeff?
No questions.
Chris?
I just had one question going back to the bridge. And we don't, unless you want, if we can go back there real quick. And I know it's just the rendering of the bridge, but it seemed like there was quite a span there between guardrail posts. That typical of the center of that span or is that just rendering?
You mean this area here? Is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
Um, it does, you're right. I never thought of that, but I mean, that's, yeah, this is really kind of a sample and I don't know why they built it that way, but obviously, we would have, we would have posts at appropriate distances. That's an interesting point. I hadn't noticed that, but you're right. There's one missing, isn't there?
Yeah, at least one. Thank you.
Yeah?
Very good, thanks. And I have no, but you proceed.
Okay. Here we are. So, this is, these are the proposed elevations of the building and this is probably a good time for us to talk a little bit about the building materials and so on and so, Brady, I'll let you do that.
Absolutely. The bulk of this building is built out of an insulated metal panel. I know we supplied samples of that for the design review committee and I don't know if those were passed around at any point to the planning board, but the exterior of the warehouse and the dock and the material handling area are all six inches of a metal panel that looks white and those are filled with insulation and then they're bevel-cocked in between as they kind of have a tummy groove system to go together. The office area is proposed as concrete masonry unit with a split face on the exterior side, just to help give some texture there. Those be several different shades of gray to be able to get the pattern that we're looking for. The only other colors on here are blue to match the NECs logos and colors and that will all be seen on the downspouts running along the exterior, as well as the dock canopy and the top roof metals that cap the roofing. The roof is also a white TPO. That's all the exterior materials on this one. There's some windows at the office, but we don't have any clear-story windows or big windows within the IMP areas proposed on this one.
So, as Jean mentioned in her, hello? Okay. As Jean mentioned in her report, warehousing is a permitted use in this zone and we have met all the dimensional requirements from the zoning bylaw. So, we're that big. We are asking for a height special permit, which is crucial to our, crucial to our business plan. The 56.6 is actually...
Chris, I think the feedback might be coming from you. From the other, again, we haven't had that. I don't know if you'd turn it down, maybe it would help?
Try that.
It was a little, I thought it was as it was.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see if that helps.
Are you done already?
Okay. So, the deck height of 56.6 and a half is actually the wall around, there's a slight raised wall around the roof in order to collect the rainwater. And the inside of the building is what we're really concerned about for business purposes and that is to have a 50-foot clear height for storage of product. So, we will be able to store product seven pallet high in racks. And that's a really important part of our model. Just for your information, if we built this building no higher than 35 feet, we would lose about 40% of the capacity of the building. Currently, we're intending to have about 24,500 pallet positions in the building and that is really where our profit potential comes from. Storage of pallets is how we make our money. And so, being able to store pallets to this height allows us to maximize the modern technology that we'll be using in the building for our forklifts and other equipment to store the product. So, it's crucial for our business because the facility size, to be competitive in this industry, really a minimum of about 25,000 pallet positions is what's required. And the reason for that is because the food companies, a lot of them are very large companies and they really don't want to store less than a certain number of pallets. And we don't want to have our entire facility occupied by one customer because then we don't have any leverage in negotiation with them going forward. And so, we intend to have somewhere between, let's say, 20 and 30 different food customers storing their products in our facility at any one time. And if we have 25,000 pallet positions, we will have almost that many, then we can store enough products for large companies to make it worthwhile for them to work with us, but still maintain that diversity of customer base. This site is great for us in terms of location, but it does have some restraint to it because it's kind of a pinched site, kind of narrow in the middle and this is really about as large a building as we can put onto the site without violating the wetlands or impeding on the neighbors. So, the size of the footprint is really at its maximum and so the question is, how high can we go and still utilize all of the modern technology that is prevalent in the industry now? And that's what we're doing. One of the ways in which we are managing to get that many pallet positions into this space is by using a technology called mobile racking. Mobile racking is sort of like the old library racks. You can slide them and open up the aisle in between any two racks at any given moment, but these are big, huge, industrial strength, heavy racks and they get moved by small motors. And our software will allow us to, as we're taking pallets off of the trucks in the loading dock area, the mobile rack will automatically begin to open to the location where we're gonna store that, so that by the time the forklift driver gets back to that location, the rack will be open to the right aisle. So, it's an example of the kind of technology that we're using in the facility. Most facilities that are approximately 120,000-foot footprint have somewhere in the area of 16 to 20,000 pallet positions. We're getting significantly more than that because, one, we're going taller than older facilities have gone, but similar to what newer facilities are doing. And, two, we're using the mobile rack, which allows a lot more density because there's not as much aisle space permanently taken up. So, we also will be able to canter lever our racking over the doorways. There will be storage directly over the doorways that the forklifts are going through between roofs. The efficiency measures of the building are another key area. One of the biggest expense line items for a business like ours is the electricity to keep the building at 10 below zero 24/7, 365. And it's really kind of an area of passion for me personally. I've done some ground-based solar development in the past and... I've done, uh, some ground-based solar development in the past, and, uh, so I've spent a lot of time looking for ways to make the facility as efficient as possible. Um, one of the things that I really enjoy about working with Arco is that they are extremely passionate about that protective envelope that they're creating, using way more, uh, insulation than is required by code, um, sealing every little look and crack in order to make the building as insulated and efficient as it possibly can be. We're also using, uh, a high-tech, uh, refrigeration system. Uh, the traditional, uh, central ammonia system, uh, is not, uh, not what we're gonna be using here. It uses more electricity, requires more maintenance, has more, uh, carbon footprint, and, uh, we will not be using that. So, we're gonna be using less energy and getting more pallets per cubic foot out of our space. Cubic feet is our cost center, because that's what we have to keep cold, and the number of pallets is our profit section. And to break into this market, we have to be more efficient than our competitors, and that is ultimately what we're gonna do. And we, we're very confident at this point that we have indeed created a model here that will be more efficient and, uh, very, very competitive with other, uh, facilities in New England. So, that is, um, that is that, um, and so that's the height special permit issue. Uh, those are the reasons why we need to, uh, be able to build to that. Um, so, I know that's, uh, uh, kind of a big deal, uh, for the town and, and for us, and so if there's anybody, any, any comment on that, I guess we can talk about that.
Okay, thank you. Seriously, have any questions on the height? Uh, Sue, do you have any questions?
My understanding of the height was a matter of the fire, fire company. If, if I'm not, um, if I'm correct, it was a matter of the ability of the fire company to deal with a height that was higher than the thirty-five foot?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's no longer an issue now.
Correct. And why is that? Because we have this proper truck?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Um, now, as far as the height goes, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chris? Uh, no questions. Okay. Uh, Dane?
No.
Okay. Mike? Mike, any question?
Sorry, Charlie, I was on mute. Uh, no questions.
Okay, fine. Jeff? No questions. Russ? No questions? Okay, I'm also with the two, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, exterior lighting, uh, the, uh, photometrics plan, uh, for the property, um, Brady, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so, the photometric that we're currently looking at are to be putting the minimum, I believe it's an average of one foot candle, um, throughout the dock apron and at the car parking area. Um, it's hard to tell in here, but I, hopefully, in the pack, you guys can see that the way these, these pole lights and these wall packs are stationed, we are limiting our, uh, our light pollution in, to our site only. Um, at this point in time, we do not plan to be lighting the access road, um, at night. So that, for, in terms of photometrics, we're maintaining it just to the car parking and those, those areas that need more safety for pedestrian walking around, as opposed to trucks driving up the access road at this time.
All right. Um, another, uh, another question that was brought up was the, uh, issue of trash removal from the site. Um, and, uh, so, up there at the, uh, the north end of our, uh, docking area, that's the trash compactor, and there's a little close-up of it where it will be, um, so you can see, uh, down the line from that are the dock doors. Um, and, uh, so it'll be kind of right there at the end of the dock, so that it'll be, uh, convenient for, uh, to use and also to, uh, to unload and, uh, remove the material from the site. So, the landscape plan, uh, obviously is pretty extensive, um, and, um, Andy, uh, do you want to talk about the landscape plan for a little while?
Sure. Uh, um, the landscape plan itself, I'm, I'm not the landscape, uh, architect of record, but the plan shown in front of you, as you can see, there's some extensive plantings along the berms of the drainage basins, both drainage basin A and drainage basin B, as well as the, uh, proposed plantings in the replication area, and that is to mitigate the impact of the site with relationship to the wetlands, A, from a replication standpoint with crossing, and then B, for the work of the drainage basin itself along the berm, or the exterior of the berm for the drainage basin within the buffer zone. Uh, the access road itself, there's no proposed plantings until we get to the drainage basin area, where there'll be more clearing, and the, uh, you'll have a row of trees on both sides of the roads, as well as at the corner of the building to break it up at the T intersection, uh, to, again, break up the ro- the building itself and, and give some character to the road. The access road, the temporary access road from New England, uh, Sturbridge Mallurgical is gonna be replicated to mitigate the impact from putting in the, removing the vegetation and, and putting in a temporary access road, as shown right there. And then the remaining portion of the focus of the planting has been around the parking area, the, uh, employee and visitor parking area, as well as the main office building. They give that front area some, some character and some open space that employees can utilize and enjoy. Um, most of the slopes are three-to-one slopes around the access roads, they'll just be planted with a slope mix, uh, to keep low maintenance, but have a stable site, stable slope, and then there's a lawn seed mix around the, uh, parking areas for the employees, as well as in the front of the building.
Okay. Um, you can see a little inset here of that, uh, this, this replication area, um, and as you can see, this, this will be heavily vegetated, uh, there's three nice big red maples, uh, in here, and then, uh, a whole bunch of, uh, of different, um, shrubs in order to, uh, fully, um, uh, take hold and, uh, and replicate that wetland area there.
Right. Andy, uh, Christie, uh, ar- architect could, um, just go over wha- what the reasoning was to some of, goes to some of the species?
I, I do know that the species chosen within the two-hundred-foot buffer zone were very specific to be native species that are, um, recognized to be in the Sturbridge or a southwestern county area, and not other species from other parts of the state. Uh, that was the primary driver that was chosen in there, as well as replication species for a wooded wetland, not a, uh, a meadow. Um, okay.
So, based on permission, weigh in on that?
Yes. And th- these are some, uh, photographs of some of the, uh, what those plants will look like in bloom.
Uh, board members?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, so that is the, uh, that's the landscape plan. So, uh, traffic, uh, first of all, onsite traffic, um, we've, uh, we've set this up as a one-way loop around the facility, um, so that, uh, we're, we're not gonna have, uh, much chance of any kind of, uh, head-on encounter. Uh, as you can see, the employees will, uh, will continue on to the employee parking lots around the outside, uh, but they also will be on that one-way loop around the property. Um, and, uh, and we think that this will, uh, create a very efficient, uh, turning radius for the trucks. Uh, it'll allow them, uh, when they, they pull into the lot, if you can picture this, then they're gonna turn and back up into a spot, they'll be able to, uh, to have, uh, a good line of vision, because they'll be backing up, looking over their left shoulder out the window, as well as using mirrors, uh, which, uh, has a significant positive effect on the amount of time required for docking and the, uh, amount of time required for adjustments, uh, and ultimately pulling out and leaving again. Um, all of that kind of efficiency of operation is extremely important, what we're doing. We're estimating somewhere in the area of sixty to seventy truck, trucks a day, once we get going, and everybody's on an appointment. Every truck driver knows exactly when they're supposed to get there and when they're supposed to dock, um, and, uh-
If you could, I, I think you were saying, let's quickly, you said any trucks, but I think you broke up a little bit on that.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, the, uh, the trucks coming in, uh, will all be on appointments, and, uh, sometimes they will, obviously, they've traveled long distance, they may arrive early, um, and we have, uh, what is, uh, pretty significant luxury in this industry of having, uh, lots of roadway, basically from here all the way down to here, uh, where they can park and wait if they need to. Or they can come in and drop their trailer in one of these twenty-one spots here, uh, if they need to do that, and we can move their trailer around at the appointed time. Uh, we have a lot of onsite facility here, which makes for a very efficient operation. Uh, we will have a, uh, a small lounge inside where the truckers can come in and, um, uh, use the bathroom and get a cup of coffee and take a, take a little break. Um, so we, we have a, uh, a very, uh, positive experience set up for the truckers and for our truck traffic onsite, uh, at the facility, and that's a very important part of an efficient operation. Regarding the, uh, the traffic coming into and leaving the site, um, uh, we have Mr. Gwen with us, who can, uh, talk about that a little bit, from Van Ass.
Yes, basically, we analyzing the traffic for this site, estimating, using basically sixty to seventy, uh, truck traffic, and using the size of, uh, the building to estimate based on the Institute of Transportation Engineer Manual to estimate the number of trip, the toll trip for this project will be, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-six trips. Going to peak hours, only like thirteen and fourteen trips, during the AM and PM evening, respectively. And basically, the tr- when the traffic, when the truck, like, the truck traffic coming out of Pick and Roll will have good access on Route Twenty, even though that, as everyone knows that Pick and Roll at Route Twenty, the traffic operation isn't that great at this time, especially during the evening, uh, peak hour, uh, but, as we know that we generate, we have a little traffic coming out from Pick and Roll, so, in general, our impact is not much at all, and, um, based on, uh, Mass DOT common, basically, they think this is a very low generator and will not really affect traffic operations, uh, at this intersection.
All right, and, um, Mr. Shavland, you, uh, you've, you've been very patient, do you want to, uh, talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, if the board, uh, wants to get with the screen.
Yeah, I think this would be a good time, John, to do that.
Okay, okay. So, all right, well, thank you, uh, very much, uh, for the recognition. Uh, we received, uh, the plan and the traffic study, and also the safety audit, and stuff like that, so it would be, we took all those into consideration, but we wanted to-
Yeah, I, I think, John, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, John, maybe, I don't know if you need to turn up the volume or, uh, get a little less feedback?
Charlie, how's that?
I think that's a little better, John.
A little better? Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Um, so, like I said, we, we went ahead and further studied, we reviewed the plans, the traffic study that was performed by Van Ass, and also the whole safety audit. Did a few reviews, just to check out existing conditions, uh, went through the report, we submitted comments on August sixth, uh, for consideration. We did get, uh, comments, uh, responses to the comments we received back on August eighteenth from, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Dirk. Uh, we have coordinated with Mr. Dirk from Van Ass as well. Um, and based on our coordination, we went ahead, we, uh, summarized what our findings were based on our comments and the responses. Um, overall, you know, as mentioned, you know, this is somewhat of a, a low traffic generator, um, you know, my biggest concern at first was in regards of the whole operations. Got to make sure if this is a type of facility where they load it up in the, in the overnight, and then at seven o'clock in the morning, all the trucks, you know, fifteen, twenty trucks, about once, whatever, but based on the information that you heard tonight, and based on the information that's provided to us, uh, the truck traffic is distributed throughout the day, and as, as mentioned, um, um, that from Mr. Bouchard, that the truck are going to have their own appointment, so they're not coming out all at once and not leaving all at once. That probably relieves some of the concern that I had. Uh, same thing with the employees, there's two employee shifts that are occurring, they do occur off-peak hours, uh, peak the morning, the, the first peak starts at seven in the morning, and is done at six in the evening, and then another, uh, employee shift that starts at seven at night, leaves at six in the morning. So, when the employees are coming in, again, it's all off-peak, uh, most part, so it shouldn't really have a significant impact, actually, to the traffic. Um, you know, overall, like I said, I had several minor comments, but I looked at, as far as the safety of the site, and currently, with the crash area that's provided, uh, this is not an intersection that has a high crash rate right now, but there are some things in regards that I thought may be, uh, beneficial for the project, and mainly the, uh, the item I thought was a left-turn lane into the site for traffic heading on Route Twenty eastbound. I think that's something that I think even the Alp can agree, that that would be best, but I think right now it's just not, um, uh, cost prohibitive for what they're looking to do right now, but they have been talking with Mass DOT, and I recommend that the town continue to coordinate with Mass DOT as far as trying to improve that, uh, intersection a little bit more. Um, as far as the capacity, uh, issues, or capacity that goes on out there, um, the, the, it's right that the one movement that is gonna have a increase in level of service is the exit coming out on to a, out, coming out from Picker onto Route Twenty. So, you'll have queues there, but the rest of the intersection, um, you know, at least on Route Twenty, the turning movements on there, uh, work at a pretty good level of service, um, but it's just the one movement coming out of the site getting into the traffic stream, so. Uh, but like I said, those tra- those are trips that are gonna be backed up as far as truck traffic, and as previously mentioned, it's not a heavy load of trips, truck trips come out once, so those be, should be distributed for the day. Another item that we looked at that, uh, was discussed was, you know, how when you're coming out of Fisk Hill Road, currently, they do not allow a left turn, allow a left turn out of the site, it's a right turn only. We did take a look at that to see whether that's something that'd be beneficial for this as well, try to get the left turn movements coming out of the site. And after reviewing it, it seems like that, that may cause more of a problem, because you start telling traffic, uh, I want to take a left turn, which isn't a big number, but you're just gonna be adding more traffic that's gonna be heading towards the, the center of pallets. So, it seemed like it was just increasing the truck traffic in the area, and I think with, you know, the patience and, and people being able to pull out of there, I think it's, uh, it can work, uh, safely and efficiently. I think, you know, so overall, I think the, the traffic study that they performed, I think was, the methodology was correct, uh, I think, based on the comments that I originally had on August sixth, I think they are all responded to appropriately, and I, you know, I do, uh, agree with their, their assessment, finding to that this, uh, the whole site will not have any significant impacts to safety or capacity in the area. It should work efficiently. To quick summary, but I probably hit too many questions.
Okay, yeah, I think this might be a good time to see if the board and I just have any questions for you and for the, uh, proponent on that. Uh, Sue, do you have any questions on the traffic?
Yes, I have a question for John. I was just wondering what the view is like from Picker Road West on Twenty with that curve there? Will they have enough time to cross Route Twenty and go east?
I think the, the sidelines that they have on there and the distance, they should, they should have enough time to get through there. The site distances, uh, are, do meet the actual requirements for that movement, yes.
Okay, just, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. Sue, Chris?
My, my only question, and I guess John is supposed to you as well, is, uh, a, a few months back, when we, um, when we approved the, the, the gas, um, company's upgrade that they're doing, uh, I know traffic coming out of there was, was a, a concern, or, or a lot of questions were raised as a result of it. With the combination of the gas company and with, with this, do you see any potential issues with, with the, with the number of, of, uh, large- issues with, with the, with the number of, of, uh, larger vehicles that are going to be coming out of there?
Yeah, with the study they did, I think they took those counts into, into play with their existing counts. And I know there's some adjustments that were made because of COVID and they, they, uh, did seem to have as a significant amount of adjustment to cover the volumes out there, which were in, included in the study. So, I don't, I don't see it, again, with the way that they have their trucks distributed throughout the day and, you know, the numbers that they're going to have, I, I don't see it being that significant of a, of an impact.
Thank you.
With the, with the distribution, I, I wouldn't have more of a comp, you know, I wouldn't have more of a concern of, as I said before, if they had something where they, they started up in the morning and everybody, you know, went ahead and did their trips first thing all at once, like you had, you know, ten trucks doing it once. But with the distribution that's been explained to me, I, I see it being evenly distributed and not having a significant impact with the film.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay, thank you, Dane, Mike?
Uh, Mr. Shavelin did a great job at, addressing all my concerns, so I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
No questions.
Thank you. Russ?
No questions.
Okay, and I'm all set with that. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, wrapping up here, um, uh, we will, uh, we will be creating a state-of-the-art facility and business, uh, in your community, and, uh, we're pretty excited about it. Uh, there really is a lack of this type of cold storage facility nationally and particularly in New England. Uh, the average age of this kind of facility in, in New England is, uh, we, we estimated at twenty-eight years. Um, and that means that those facilities are far less, uh, efficient and, uh, far less convenient for customers and also using a lot more, uh, electricity and have a much higher carbon footprint in general. Uh, so we're, uh, we're really looking forward to moving the industry of cold storage forward here. Um, this is essential infrastructure, as you know. Uh, these kinds of facilities, uh, do, do very well in down markets and have done very well over the past month. Um, they did very well in two thousand and eight, um, but, uh, but frankly, this industry, uh, has done very well ever since two thousand and eight as well. So, it's a, uh, it's a very strong, uh, industry to be getting into. We're going to be a significant taxpayer in your town, as you well know. Uh, we're going to be a significant employer. Uh, the jobs that we're going to create here are going to be full-time, trained, uh, educated jobs for, uh, for trained employees. They will be receiving benefits. These are good jobs. Um, and, uh, we will be invisible outside of the industrial park. Um, the, uh, the, the two, two and a half miles to the intersection with, uh, with eighty-four is, uh, is kind of the only area where you will see us at all. Um, and will certainly be invisible to your tourism sector in the same way. And we really appreciate the support that we've received from the town right from the beginning. Uh, Dean and, and, uh, Mr. Bridges have been, uh, fantastic to work with and, uh, we, uh, we're hoping to do our part in return. So, uh, with that, I will say thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, before I turn it over to see if there's any of the public to have questions, does anyone else on the board have any other questions on any part of this that they'd like to bring up now? Sue?
I just have one question. Um, this speaker has a background in solar energy. Is there a reason that solar energy isn't being approached at this point for that facility?
Um, yeah, frankly, it's because I, I haven't had time to do it yet. Um, I am, I, I am, uh, in the process of, um, of looking at specifically how to do it. Um, and I, um, I'm talking to, uh, two or three different companies about it at the moment. Um, and, uh, there are a few other, um, things that I'm working on, on that front as well. Uh, we will likely have solar on the roof. We will possibly have solar in the back, uh, of the site behind the employee parking area. Um, I'm not sure about that because of the, uh, the trees there are so tall that it might be too shady and not working. Um, another, um, energy efficiency thing that I'm doing, I'll just say quickly, is, um, we're going to have a thermal battery system in the facility. Thermal batteries are essentially like the gel packs that you throw into the cooler when you go to the beach. Um, and we're going to have racks of them, um, at the top of the racking system, fifty feet above the, uh, the floor, um, uh, above the top product. And, uh, what they will do, they'll be engineered, uh, to go through their phase change from liquid to solid, solid to liquid at a given temperature, which will be the temperature that we're going to hold, you know, the room at. Um, and so what they can do is they can store up energy in that way. And then when the, uh, peak demand time for national grid comes and, uh, they need to, uh, to shed some load, they can ask us to do that and, uh, we will probably on a regular basis turn off our refrigeration system for that time when everybody turns their air conditioner on and the, and the grid is stressed. Uh, and we'll be able to, uh, rely on those thermal batteries, uh, to keep the facility cool for a few hours until we have to turn it back on. Uh, that will save us a great deal of money and it'll also, um, make the, uh, make the grid a lot less impacted by our project.
Great, very good.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, have any questions? Nope, no more questions. Thank you. Uh, Dane? Mike?
No questions.
No questions.
Yep. No questions. Russ?
I got a couple, Charlie. Um, typically, I've seen quite a few warehouses, there's a storage area for empty pallets, the wooden pallets. But something typical with this kind of, uh, operation or that you don't expect to see that?
No, I don't think so. Um, we, we may have, uh, broken pallets, uh, that will be, uh, put in after or stored on our, uh, on our dock until, uh, someone comes to take them away. They, they usually, uh, try to, uh, recycle them, clean them up and, uh, rebuild them. Um, but no, we, uh, we're not expecting to have a, uh, a large amount of refuse sitting around.
Chris, can I, can I jump in here? This is Brady with Arco.
Sure.
Um, so, at this point in time, typically what we do and have been doing on these types of buildings for several years now is having a rack system that is attached to the structure directly above dock doors. And that's where those empty wooden pallets are stored and sit and that runs along the length of dock. So, yes, at this point in time, that is included in, um, the initial designs of the project.
Thank you. Uh, Dean, I didn't see anywhere, maybe I missed it for the Knox box, the fire department on the building?
Um, you know, the fire department usually puts that in their report and they did not in this case, so I did not include it. Uh, let me just check fire department comments.
I didn't see it.
No, they did not ask for it in this case, but the fire department may require a Knox box when they, um, get their sprinkler system approved, so.
This is Brady with Arco.
I think we should throw that in on the order of condition somewhere. I think it's just an oversight on their part because they require it for all the commercial buildings.
Yes, I thi, I think it's fine to add. I think it's something that will probably be required anyway. If the applicant, um, in the board do not have concerns, I can insert that.
It's required by the, by the. Anything else, Russ?
Uh, Chris, I didn't see anything on the plans for it. You, you briefly discussed the power and stuff, where an emergency generator, are you going to have, I mean, this kind of operation, you, do you have an agreement with the national grid where they got a, you know, you got, you have one of the top priorities like other places in town have, or how is that going, how are you going to handle that?
We will likely have a contract. Uh, this is similar to the way the, uh, the grocery chains do it. You have a contract, show up with a, uh, with a, um, uh, a large generator in a trailer, um, and, um, bring that in to keep the facility operating, uh, for a period of time. Um, that, uh, that's generally the way, uh, it's done. It's prohibitively expensive to have a generator big enough to run this whole facility. Um, it just isn't practical. Um, but those, those kinds of, um, uh, contract arrangements are pretty common.
Okay. And just, uh, point of information, um, hopefully how many employees do, uh, do foresee, uh, being employed here?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, initially, um, uh, and also on the, um, on the, uh, issue of, of, uh, a power outage, I just want to note that, uh, because of the insulation value of the facility, uh, the facility will stay cold for an extended period of time. Uh, if, if you, uh, if you suddenly have a power outage, um, you stop opening doors at that point and, um, just let everything stay cold in there like you do with your freezer at home. Um, so, um, the, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot what the other question was. I apologize.
Employees, how many full-time employees?
So, initially, we will, uh, we'll operate one shift, uh, and that'll probably involve about eighteen employees. Um, and, uh, pretty quickly, probably, uh, toward the end of the first year or the beginning of the second year, we're projecting, uh, that we will move to a second shift. Um, and, uh, that will be, uh, another eighteen employees. Um, so, or maybe another seventeen. Our manager will probably, uh, cover both. Um, but, um, generally speaking, it's about eighteen per shift.
Thank you. That's all I have, Charlie.
Okay, thanks. Um, the other question, um, you, you had mentioned about the appointments for the trucks coming in and the fact that a lot of them can park along the driveway, uh, on the road end, and then also in all those places, you know, beyond the back of the building. And I would imagine they all have to have their refrigerated units running during that time. Is that an issue as far as having that many, uh, you know, vehicles for an extended period of time running out there?
Well, I mean, to clarify, we don't expect to have a lot of them because we, uh, stagger our appointments. Uh, as Mr. Shavelin was talking about, we had a, a extensive conversation about that. And so we don't expect to have a lot of that. But if there is a backup, um, and for some reason we, we do wind up with, uh, with a queue of trucks, um, then sure, they would have to stay refrigerated. Um, the, uh, those reefer trucks, uh, have refrigeration systems on them. Um, and, um, so it's, it's not really an issue. It's not ideal. Uh, they don't, the, the truckers don't like it, it costs them money. Um, but, uh, but that is, uh, certainly doable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. John, you, you spotted just that, uh, just for clarification, earlier before, they said they had fifteen employees per shift, which just plus fifteen, eighteen is more likely to have an impact on traffic. But I was just looking at the parking and I think with the, so that type of overlap on the parking, where there was, they still have to, I think they have forty-one space on site, so maybe eighteen, thirty-six, and hopefully the type of display that had visitors. So, just might just make sure that the parking should be sufficient as well. So, but a fifteen, eighteen, no deal, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jane, do you have anyone from the public who'd like to, uh?
We think so. There's somebody on the line, so we'll check now.
Is there anyone from the public on the line that has any questions or comments regarding the special permit and site plan for New England cold storage at Six Picker Road?
Okay, there's no one on for this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Jane, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we close the public hearing?
Uh, well, I think that, um, before you close the public hearing, I would like to go over the conditions of approval. So, I drafted the conditions of approval and provided that to the applicant with my report. You'll note that I sent you an email earlier today, and I believe it was part of your packet, that they had concerns with two of the conditions of approval that they wanted to discuss. One was pretty simple, um, item number seven about the snow storage. I had indicated in the conditions of approval that it should be removed from the site. They pointed out that they have an additional thirteen-car parking spaces. So, actually, I have proposed to reword condition number seven to say, "Snow storage may only be stored as shown on the plan submitted. If required, excess snow shall be stored on-site within the excess parking spaces in the paved parking lot." So, I think that satisfies their concern on that one, and I think it is appropriate. I overlooked the additional parking that was available. The other item I think is a discussion point for the board, and that's item number five, and that's our standard operating hours. So, five is proposed to read, "Exterior construction shall only occur during the hours of seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and eight AM to noon on Saturday. No exterior construction shall occur on Sundays or the following holidays: New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day." So, the applicant would like to discuss with the board this evening the possibility of extending to a full day of operation on Saturday. And their reasoning is that there's such a tremendous amount of site work to be done and we are coming upon the cold winter season, and they also have a lot of wetland replication. So, they're believing that the, it would allow them to create, keep the site more stable and get work done in a more efficient, efficient manner. I told them that we had allowed that in the past under special exceptions and only by the approval of the board, so they'd like to have that conversation with the board now. So, with that, I'll leave it to Chris to explain if I've missed anything to let the board know why they believe that's crucial for their operation.
Uh, actually, Brady, it might be best for you to address that in terms of crews working there.
Well, and Jane, I think you summarized it very well. That extra Saturday gives us more time to be working on the site work and be getting stabilization done as we approach winter and even after the winter and into the summer months. Having that extra day just to be able to make up a rain or a snow day, um, is always very helpful for schedule and making sure we're not potentially losing, um, potential operating income as the opening day would push out, uh, as well the, we feel this is reasonable just because we are in that industrial park and correct if I'm wrong, but I do not believe we're, we're near residential homes where this would be a nuisance in terms of noise on that Saturday. Um, that's, that's the summary of why we're requesting for that full day as opposed to just a half-day there.
Okay. On the whole day on Saturday, would that be to seven PM?
Unlikely for it to be to seven PM. I would think four or five PM would be more of a sufficient.
Right, okay, maybe that's something we could consider. Ask Russ?
Uh, I'd like to bring up for discussion the changes, uh, to on Saturday, the hours seven AM to five PM.
Okay.
That'd be a motion.
Yeah, oh, okay, fine, I, I'll, we have a second on that?
I have a question.
Yeah. Go ahead, Sue.
Why, um, because it's non-residential, is there any reason to limit their ability to get their construction and landscaping done for unlimited amount of time needed into the evening? It will be starting to get dark by five, but for their courtesy to them to be able to give the job there before the winter?
Well, I mean, they seem to think that four to five is more reasonable, and of course, if it is outside work and you can't hear noise, that would be the only issue. I mean, it, it's really realistic to be worrying about work until seven o'clock, you know, during, uh, the time that it's dark, you know, during the fall.
Right.
Chris, is that acceptable to you? Of seven to five on Saturday? Uh, we'll see.
Chris, I think they just asked if that was acceptable to you, seven to five?
Yes. I, I appreciate the sentiment of the board in general on the issue, and, uh, and I think seven to five on Saturday is fine, and I don't think anybody's going to want to work past five on Saturday anyway.
Fine, very good. Okay, anything else on the conditions, Jane?
Um, no, that was it. I, I will propose now, after Mr. Chamberlain's comment, to add a new sixteen, to say a Knox box must be installed per the requirements of the Sturbridge Fire Department, and then the ASB. Fire Department, and then the ASBIL requirement that was sixteen, I'll move that down to seventeen. But otherwise, I think we're, um, well set on the conditions.
Very good, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
I'll move Russell. Russell?
Second, Mike. Okay, Mike, thank you. Uh, Sue, how do you vote on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next, I'd like to have a motion then to grant the special permit for the height to be a maximum of fifty-six feet. Um, Chris, do you want to round it up?
Yeah, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, yeah. I would round it up to fifty-seven feet, Charlie.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion then to, uh, allow the maximum height of fifty-seven feet. I'll move Jeff. I'll move Russell.
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Uh, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Okay, thank you.
Charlie, I'm sorry.
I'd like to have a motion to grant-
Charlie, I'm sorry. Can I just interrupt to clarify on the, the motion in the second? I had Jeff Adams' motion, Russell Chamberlain's second, and then Sue also motioned, so-
Right.
I have it as, uh, Jeff Adams and Russell Chamberlain. Is that... Am I correct?
That's, that's fine, isn't it?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. There were, I think, a few motions there. Okay, thank you.
Well, first, what do you hear? All right, thank you. Okay, now I'd like to have a motion then to, uh, approve the site plan with the conditions that Jane has issued.
I'll move.
Sue, second. Chris, okay. Any discussion?
Jane, we're all set with the, uh, condition five, right? We're, we're all set with condition five on the snow where we'll vote?
Yes.
I, yes, I think so. That's what Jane was saying.
I'm checking.
Yep, good.
Thank you.
Uh, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, well, thank you very much. Good luck.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Russ. I really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. John Shavelin, thank you for the, your review.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a waiver of site plan review for Sale Energy. Uh, applicant is requesting approval to install two thirty-thousand-gallon propane tanks on-site. Uh, the property is located at fifty-nine Technology Park Road. Jane, do you have anything to add before, uh, Lenny speaks?
Um, yes, I'm going to allow Janay to share her screen and, um, put up the plans for you. And, uh, what I would like to say is, uh, first of all, I had a, a typographical error on my report. In the first line, I talk about, um, the fenced area to store customers' propane tanks, and that was a holdover from the last permit that I report that I had done for Sale Energy. So for that, I apologize. So the applicant has applied for a waiver of site plan to allow for two storage tanks to be installed on-site, and they're, they're shown on the plan that Lenny will go over with you. So this project, I did request a traffic study because I was unsure at the time if this was going to be adding additional truck traffic to the site, and since we had, we're working on three different proposals in the Technology Park at the same time, I felt it prudent to do so. So it turns out, however, that Sale Energy is not proposing to add any new trucks as or employees as a result of this bulk storage. They will be expecting one to two bulk storage deliveries per week to fill the tanks. Um, a public hearing will need to be held with the Board of Selectmen and the Fire Department to approve the fuel storage. This application has been reviewed by all staff, and no major concerns were noted, and I am recommending a waiver of site plan approval. We have put up the plan, and Mr. Jalbert is on the line to explain his plan to the board.
Good day. This is Lenny Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering. I'm here to, uh, present the, uh, property for, uh, Sale Energy, which is located at fifty-nine Technology Park Road. What it actually is, is that, uh, we've done a couple steps, uh, to get before your board. And one was the, uh, main study, traffic study for the project. Uh, what it actually came up with is said that the intersection of, uh, Picker Road and Technology Park Road and that would not create any increase in, uh, traffic because of only one, uh, vehicle on the site, and the fact that they have ten employees now, and they're not increasing that employees, and the, the, uh, original approval of the site, which was done, uh, in, in, um, let's see, two thousand, uh, I'm seeing, yeah, two thousand and three, I think.
Russ, two thousand and three, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand and three. Uh, yeah, hasn't, they haven't had, they haven't had any accidents, uh, at the intersection of Picker Road and Technology Park Road. Uh, the, uh, site itself, what we're proposing is two thirty-thousand-gallon, uh, storage tanks propane on the site. The site itself is at the southeast corner along Technology Park Road is, is, uh, there's a hydrant at that particular location. Uh, then, there's another hydrant at fifty-one Technology Park Road, which is just down the street a few hundred feet. The, uh, there was a, uh, flow study done on that and pressure study done on fifty-one. However, with a meeting with the, uh, Fire Department on, uh, September third, uh, they recommended that we do a pressure test and flow study for the hydrant that's on Technology Park Road. Because of the proximity of, uh, the one at fifty-one and the one at fifty-nine, I, I foresee absolutely no problem, uh, relative to the, uh, pressure and the flow on that. The, uh, tanks themselves will be installed on cradles, uh, which will be no excavation of the site. Uh, they're going basically in the paved area that's there. Uh, it'll be, uh, set back from the, uh, northerly, uh, line by fifty feet and the northwesterly line by fifty feet, which is according to the, uh, code. Uh, going over with the meet, with the meeting on the, uh, Fire Department, they wanted, uh, one thing done with the thirty, uh, thousand-gallon tanks, that the monitoring system, uh, be placed with the installation of the tank to notify the Fire Department of its particular conditions, and that the, um, uh, that the hydrant be tested. That was the only two things. The, the next thing they were going to was going before the, uh, Board of Selectmen. Uh, we, we tried to get to the meeting, which was actually scheduled tomorrow night, which has been postponed several times. And the next meeting for the, uh, Selectmen will be on, uh, October second, uh, to discuss the, uh, property, uh, with the Board of Selectmen to get our permit with the Fire Department and the Selectmen. Uh, that is basically just installation, uh, criteria, and I, again, don't feel any, uh, real problems relative to that. If any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Lenny. Sue, do you have any questions? Um, Chris? Oh, no questions. Jane?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Uh, no questions.
Hey, Jeff?
No questions.
Russ?
No questions.
Hey, I don't have any questions. Do we have a motion then to grant the waiver of site plan approval for this project?
Excuse me, Charlie. I think somebody may be on the line for this. Can, can we just check?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Good idea. Okay, sorry.
Is there anyone from the public on the line that has any questions or comments regarding the waiver of site plan for Sale Energy at fifty-nine Technology Park Road?
They already closed the public hearing, though.
No, I guess not. There's, there was somebody on the line, but they're not for this particular hearing.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then, can we have a motion then to get the waiver of site plan approval?
Second.
Second, Mike.
All right, second, great. Who is that?
Mike.
All right, okay, good. Okay, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Very good. Our next item is a discussion-
Charlie, this is Jeff. I, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to vote on that one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? Or you, you're all set?
I'm a, I'm a stickler for the record, Charlie.
That's a good idea. So you vote yes. Okay, good. Great. Okay, thank you. Um, next we have a discussion. Jane, you want to talk a little bit about the codification project?
Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you, Lenny.
Okay. So the, um, codification project, you'll see that you have kind of a large, uh, packet within your packets that have some questions. Um, however, since I prepared this packet, we've actually requested and received an extension until October sixteenth so that the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Bridges have adequate time to go through the proposed changes. So I don't know if you went through and read all of the questions, but you'll see that a lot of the questions related to our stormwater management and the rules and regulations for the DPW versus Planning Board rules and regulations versus our subdivision regulations, for example. So a lot of it's going through and making sure that we're referencing appropriate sections and that our variety of rules and regulations that we have within the town all match each other. So in some cases, we have conflicting requirements. For instance, the DPW requires a twelve-foot driveway, and our subdivision regulations require a ten-foot. So a lot of it's been working with the various departments to go through and kind of clean those items up. I'm working right now on revising our, um, the stormwater requirements for the DPW so that they're consistent with the ones that were most recently adopted by the Planning Board. And then a lot of the other questions, uh, revolve around the manufactured housing, or as we still call it in our bylaw, believe it or not, Trailer Coach Park. So I'm working with, um, the Board of Health right now to revise those as well. The last one that generated a lot of questions was the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And you'll see, as those of you that are familiar with the bylaw, realize it's pretty out of date. Um, it allows only a very small unit of six hundred square feet. It has to be within the main home. It can't be in a detached accessory structure, et cetera. So a lot of, um, the requests on that are that we look at it to clean it up. For instance, we have a minimum dwelling size of seven hundred and fifty square feet. So our accessory dwelling unit doesn't even allow for our minimum dwelling size. So I think, um, you will be getting our housing plan, actually, I emailed it to you this evening. And you'll see within the housing plan, one of the requirements is that we update the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So I think rather than, um, a few of these simple questions that I posed this evening, with the, uh, concurrence of the board, I would like to take a little more time and actually make some significant revisions to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw to actually accomplish the goals that are stated in the housing plan that I sent to you this evening. So with that, there's just, um, really kind of four areas that I'll go through with you this evening. And the first is question three hundred dash O two. And you, you know how in the zoning bylaw, as you're reading along, there'll be references to when a certain section of the bylaw was amended. So when this project is done, we'll be basically re-adopting our bylaws in their entirety as recodified by this project. So they're asking if we want to retain the historical information as it appears in the manuscript, or just include a prior historical information zoning derivative, derivation ta, table, excuse me, only. And I think it would make sense, my opinion, to take the historical information out of the manuscript and have it in the table. I think it makes for much cleaner reading, and then if you still need to refer, look to see when something had changed, you can easily go to the table and see when a certain section was amended. So I wondered the feeling of the board, if you agree with that, or if you'd rather have the historical information directly in the manuscript. We can do it either way.
Right. But, I, I think it would be good to do what you suggest. Does anyone have any concern about that, about not using the chart? Okay, so it looks like we're all set with that, I believe.
All right, very good. Um, and then the next question is three hundred dash eighteen, and that's asking, um, we have the term mobile home retirement community, and we have, um, they're wondering if we should rename that Trailer Coach Park for persons over the age of fifty-five. But actually, as I mentioned, I am working on that with the health agent right now to revise that into a, an updated manufactured housing bylaw. So I think our appropriate reference will be manufactured housing community or manufactured housing retirement community. So again, I'd like to hold this until a later date now that we have a little bit of extra time to work on that, if that's fine with the board.
Okay. Is that fine with everyone? I, I think that's-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then question three hundred dash O three.
Wait, wait, one question. Jane, sorry. Uh, is that going to add any confusion for somebody that wants to build a modular home? Because that's a manufactured home.
No, we're going to look at, no, um, the manufactured housing communities, it, there's a specific definition under the state guidance for them, and it's basically the, uh, as we would call the old trailer coaches. So as we're rewriting this section, we're being very careful to make sure we use that information. So a modular home is just considered a regular dwelling unit. Um, and a manufactured housing is, it's a bit of a different definition under the code. So we're trying to be very careful to make sure there's no confusion there on that. But that was a good, that's a good question. I'm glad you raised it.
Thanks, good.
You're welcome. Uh, the next question is three hundred dash zero three eight, and this is something that's in our accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and it says that, um, "A special permit for an accessory dwelling unit shall be only for two years." Well, the Zoning Board of Appeals is the special permit granting authority for this, and they've never imposed that condition, feeling that it's such a significant expense for somebody to build a unit within their home and then to only have that permit for two years. So that's, really seems like an unnecessary burden, and I would recommend we delete that. And that will be part of the revisions that I provide to you at our upcoming meeting. Does anyone have a real concern with that?
Is anyone have any-
Get a page number, Jane.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue. Uh, it's page one thirty-five. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, so that seems reasonable. Does anyone have any concern about that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Um, the next one is, uh, page one forty-three. It's question three hundred dash zero-four-six. And, um, this is where it has the square footage, the minimum habitable area. Our accessory dwelling unit bylaw allows only six hundred square feet. You'll see in the housing plan that I sent you this evening, they're recommending that it be at least seven hundred and fifty square feet, maybe greater by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I think, um, if no one has any real concerns, I'd like to rework that section to reflect that recommendation in the housing plan.
Again, it seems like it makes sense. Anyone have any concerns or questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the final one that I have for you this evening is on page one eighty. So the state law actually now allows a special permit to be valid for three years, where previously it was only valid for one year. So I would recommend that we update our bylaw to be consistent with the state law, which would allow for a special permit to be valid for a period of three years. I think it would, um, remove the issue of a lot of unnecessary requests for extensions if we just went along with the state law. And does anyone have a real concern with that? No, okay.
No, I think that's fine.
All right. So I'll continue to work on these, and I will have the changes for you at an upcoming meeting. Either, hopefully, I'll have some ready for the last meeting in September. If not, I'd like to at least try to wrap everything up by the first meeting in October.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I guess you have an update?
Yes, I do. So our next meeting is on September twenty-second. Um, I've referenced the housing plan a couple of times this evening, and that plan will need to be presented to you and actually adopted by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. So I'm hoping to be able to do that either at the next September meeting or at one of the meetings in October. Um, we'll continue to work on the codification as well. And, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Petrogas, I just wanted to update you. The bike rack has been relocated near the building, as was originally proposed. And actually, we did receive a rather nice email from someone who's, um, uses that bike rack and happens to be disabled, and they wanted to reach out and thank us for having it moved back to where it belonged. Um, so that was nice to see that somebody recognized that and that they're actually, and that they really are using it. And we also have the as-built plans are being submitted. I have an email from the engineer. Those are being completed now, so we'll be able to close that project out. And then finally, you have correspondence in your packet from Bob George. And you recall, he was the attorney for the potential Equestrian Park. And, um, he is hoping to start work with the Board of Select, or with the town administrator, actually, to work on the details of a host community agreement. And he wanted to reach out to the Planning Board to see if you had any concerns or if there were any ideas of things that you believe should be, um, included in the host community agreement. So I don't know if anyone had any, um, comments this evening or if you want to give that some thought, and if you think of anything, you could send them to me, and I could compile a list and have that ready for the next Planning Board meeting. I don't know what your thoughts are. You may or may not have anything. I don't know.
Uh, Sue, you have a question or comment?
Yes. Um, I don't believe I have a copy of the host agreement.
Oh, no, one has not been negotiated. They're, they're saying they're, they're-
The, the initial-
No, they're, they're saying they're preparing to- get their thoughts together regarding negotiating a host community agreement, and they were wondering if the Planning Board had any things of, any ideas of things the board thought would be appropriate to include in that agreement.
Yeah, so I, I think it would be a good idea, if you think about it, to just send an email directly to Jane, and then she can compile the information and get Jeff on it. Right?
Okay.
Now, I, I did have a question. On, I, I looked quickly at the housing plan that was sent out, and it said Appendix A and Appendix B. Is that the whole report or is there something else? I didn't get to read the whole thing, but the, the first, uh, part of it just said Appendix A and then the second half said Appendix B.
Okay, you should have the whole report. It was a zip file. I'll check tomorrow to make sure everything went through appropriately. If not, I'll break that up.
All right.
I can break it up and resend it as individual pieces.
Yeah, I, I think there were like twenty-five pages in it, at least what I downloaded. So I don't know if that's the right number or not.
That's not the right number, so I'll check that attachment and, uh, resend that to all of you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, as far as the next meeting, I, I understand that the Board of Selectmen is going to be discussing the possibility of going back to live meeting. Um, do you want to go over that at all, Jane or Jeff, and see if there's any interest we might have in doing that?
I think Jeff is, Jeff, do you mind going over, um, that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. Um, we, we can bring people back into the chamber, uh, or the boards and committees back into the chamber. The real issue comes when we're trying to still communicate with applicants, department heads, and the public. There is a limit on the number of people that can occupy the board, the chamber, so we still need a digital presence to hold the meeting. So we've been trying to find out how to allow the boards and committee members to be in the meeting and then allow the department heads and the applicants to be in the meeting and still allow public participation. So at this point, it's a technical issue.
Okay. Jeff, I, I wonder if it would make sense if we added where the Board of Selectmen are instead of where we normally are, just, just because it seems like a bigger facility.
Say again?
I, I'm wondering from a space perspective if it would make more sense to just hold, uh, hold the meetings where the Board of Selectmen usually meet, um, just because it's a larger space.
That will have to be because that's where the technology is.
Okay.
We are working, we're working on a workaround. So basically, what will happen is the camera system that we broadcast with to the public will become a go-to-meeting participant. So the video's not a problem. It's working out the audio, where the audio inputs would be in the room without creating tremendous feedback from all the microphones that have to be active to get each member.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. Yeah, the reason I brought it up was really that if it is possible, um, does anyone on the Planning Board have a concern about going back to live meeting? How, I'm, I'm sure that the conditions will be defined pretty well by Jeff, but assuming that is a possibility, does anyone have any concern about going back to, uh, live meetings? Uh, Sue?
As long as social distancing is respected.
I think that would have to be part of it, sure.
Yes.
Uh, Jeff, this is, this is, this is Jeff Adams. Um, Jeff, is, is there, have you taken the pulse of other municipalities around the area? Like, you know, what, what are they doing? I mean, or across the state?
It's kind of a free-for-all. Some towns never really close. Some towns never stop meeting in person. Uh, some town halls aren't even open. Uh, some boards aren't talking about, um, meeting in person again. So it's really what your own municipality is comfortable with. And the benefit to us maintaining a digital presence for department head, staff, and the applicant is if there is a board or committee member that is not comfortable with going back into a live meeting, they can still participate through the digital means as well.
Oh, good. All right, well, we'll, we'll review it then when we hear what it might be. Sue? Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Okay, any old business? Sue?
No.
Chris?
Uh, nope, no new business.
Dane?
Nope.
Mike?
None.
Yeah?
Nothing.
Russ?
Nope.
Nope, and I don't have any either. Any new business? Want me to go through the whole thing? And does anyone have any new business?
No.
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 Okay. Okay, good. Did I have a motion then to adjourn?
Don't move.
Don't move, Russ. I'll go quick. I'll give the, I'll give the motion to Sue and the second to Russ. Okay, Sue, how do you vote? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Take care.
I guess you're on.